There's not much for me to say in this as we're going over the construction excise tax, what it means and how we're going to get to this or not get to this, and a letter to C4. I read over that letter and I'm sure all of you have too as well, so I'm not really sure what the discussion's going to be on that, but I'm going to hand this over to staff to let us know what this is all about. So, I appreciate your time and thank you. So, staff, go ahead and take it away.
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, sorry, I don't have an agenda in front of me and so I didn't know if the letter was first or CET was first.
It's you.
I think, uh, construction excise CET is what I have on here.
Alright, well, let's hope Taylor jumps on because she's got part of this.
Okay.
Um, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And...
Okay, good.
How are we looking? Does that have the cover slide there showing up?
Yeah, it has the cover slide on there. You've got all the pictures. Yep, that's good.
Okay. Um, well, yeah, away we go. So, um, uh, I'll throw this up here just to give us some direction for our time together. Um, last we met, um, the direction that council gave was that there was interest and consensus among council members that we might want to implement a construction excise tax, but that we're short on information. We want more information, want some answers to some questions before we do something with potentially this much impact on development in the community, developers, um, housing generally, and folks needing housing. So, anyway, there are just a lot of questions that came up. Um, some of those we're going to get into tonight superficially, but, um, tonight will remain fairly high level. Our objectives, as you see here, 1, 2, and 3, is to kind of do a little review to begin with. I think for the most part, between Katie's two presentations, maybe even three, um, we're all fairly well-versed at this point in at least what the tax is, where it comes from, and how it can be spent, but nonetheless, we'll still cover that briefly. And then Taylor's going to take us more into what we would like the outcome of the evening to be, and that is with regard to getting your questions and concerns. Some of those we've already received, I think from Councilor Strobel, we have some, um, and potentially others that I may not have seen yet. Um, we'd like to understand which voices you counselors would like to hear from as you evaluate, um, this potential tax, and then finally, look at timeline and process. How quickly would you like to move through this? How deep do you want to go? Um, and so forth. So, um, I think without further ado, um, we'll jump in. Um, questions at this point? Or, this is kind of an open format, and so feel free to interrupt at any time and jump in with anything that seems amiss, or things that you'd like a question or clarification on.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, this is an excerpt from a recent Housing Needs Analysis. It says preliminary because the, um, the analysis that was done, uh, was not a sort of full-depth, full-length housing needs analysis. It was, uh, sort of an intro to. Um, and so it covered concepts. It did get into some of the number crunching, but not to the full depth that you would do if you were doing a full, um, analysis, for example, a comprehensive plan update. We had just enough data and information to do some of the minor modifications that were completed with the recent zone changes and comprehensive plan changes. But, um, I'll try not to read from the slides too much this evening, but this one I will read. It says, "Estacada needs a broader range of housing types with a wider range of price points than is currently available in the city's housing stock. This includes providing an opportunity for development of housing types such as, uh, smaller single-family detached housing, such as cottages, uh, small lot, single-family detached units, townhouses, duplexes, tri- and quadplexes, and then apartments." Um, and that's, I think, what has, uh, led Councilor Dunsmere to advocating for this tax is, um, her position that this tax may help us to get to some of this diversity that is currently, um, short, in short supply. Um, this slide, I'd like to just say that the diversity and housing need is, is more than, uh, what I'm calling a feel-good or humanitarian matter. I think those are two very valid reasons for wanting housing diversity, because it's perhaps the right thing to do, and also because providing housing for those, um, whose incomes don't allow for housing at all, or the type of housing that they may need. Um, uh, those are two very valid reasons for wanting more housing diversity. But, on top of that, um, cities, municipalities, incorporated areas within, throughout the state have a legal obligation to provide housing diversity as well. Um, if you're interested in getting into the language of that requirement, um, that's available on, uh, DLCD's website. You can just punch in "Golten" and on Google, and you'll find it pretty quickly. The other reason why I'd say diversity's more important than just sort of the feel-good humanitarian aspect is that if a city, um, is merely a bedroom community with, uh, large lot, single-family homes, nothing against those by the way, but if that's all a city is, or predominantly is, um, you're potentially foregoing some tax revenue per acre. Um, certainly, we don't want, uh, sky-rises throughout this, uh, city, but some density does enhance a city's ability to maximize its revenue per acre. And while that sounds like, um, a very business-y thing to say, on many levels, that's exactly what cities are, and in order to have our proper operations, amenities, programs, the things that residents want, you need to maximize your tax revenue, and density is, is one way to do it. Um, and this is kind of what I was also already hinting at, but this increased density in some areas, uh, makes for a more vibrant community in some ways. There's a famous, um, planner from, oh, I think mid-century, her name was Jane Jacobs, and she was a big advocate of density, especially in urban areas, because of the way that it brings communities together and puts more eyes on the street. It's sort of a built-in neighborhood watch program, and, um, and beyond that, that sort of vibrancy and the natural sort of safety that some density can bring, um, that greater population capacity also, again, is, uh, provides that critical mass in order to support things like small businesses, you know? You need a certain population number to have the types of businesses that residents want. Some of the businesses that people would say are missing from Estacada right now are those that just currently can't be supported by, um, our population. So, um, I guess I'll leave it at that and not get too much more wordy. Um, finally, homogenous communities are boring. I realize this sounds like it's a little bit more in the feel-good department, but I would actually make an argument that, um, it's, it's actually pretty, um, pragmatic to want, to have a stronger sense of place in your community. There's a strong consensus within the economic development community that one of the ways that cities become more attractive to residents and businesses is their sense of place. If you're just the same as every other place, um, it's not necessarily a very attractive to live, work, and be. And so, um, some degree of heterogeneity can contribute to this sense of place and make a city, just frankly, more, more interesting, better place to, to just be. Um, in terms of numbers, this is an excerpt again from that Housing Needs Analysis. Um, the part we'll focus on tonight is this need, stated need across the next 20 years of 153 multifamily units. This report doesn't distinguish between affordable market rate, or any other type more specific than just saying multifamily. That could come in the form of duplex, triplex, um, apartments, and so forth. Um, there's, we don't have the data to support this yet. We will with a more in-depth Housing Needs Analysis, but we feel that there's a pretty strong consensus that the projections, the population growth projections that this cursory HNA gave us were pretty modest and probably understate the need for housing generally, and probably understate the housing need for multifamily housing as well. Um, so this 153, you would probably consider a baseline need. Um, question, Mayor?
No, no, I was just checking out the numbers.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So, there's a number of ways that we can promote, um, diversity and affordability, and here's another excerpt that I'll, uh, take from the larger Housing Needs Analysis that was done county-wide. We were a portion of that study. Um, that last excerpt that I read you, um, was the Estacada, um, level study. It says, "Cities and counties will need to identify additional ways to support all types of housing development that is affordable to all income levels. Some approaches include: changes in zoning code to support affordable housing development, density bonuses," and we can talk about that in a second, "for affordable housing, surplusing publicly-owned land for affordable housing development, property tax abatements, SDC waivers, and changes in the ways those SDCs are charged, and other tools." Um, I guess I had these bolded in my draft, but somehow that bold text didn't come through, but we'll revisit this list of tools in a moment. Uh, this infographic comes from the Clackamas County Study, not the Estacada Study. The Estacada numbers would be slightly lower, or incrementally lower than what you're seeing here, um, but the concept remains, uh, the same. And, um, what this infographic is trying to, uh, tell, or what story it's trying to tell, is that for folks who are falling, um, in the categories of, um, they're using example occupations as cashier, nursing assistant, postal carrier, teacher, um, they're stating that the rent that they can afford, according to HUD standards, 30% of gross income. Um, if you had a household income of $24,000, your monthly affordability for rent would be $600. There are not many units that go for $600, and then about $1,000 if you're making this next bracket higher. Um, so, there's a need for subsidized housing in addition to market-rate multifamily housing. Um, and so, uh, as we'll get into tonight, there's tools you can use to try and create that subsidized affordable housing. CET is one tool. So, of those list of tools that were listed out in the Clackamas County Study, I just wanted briefly kind of go through which tools we are currently working on, or have implemented, or in the process of implementing. Um, that excerpt suggested that a city's development code, its zoning map, and the, the code that implements those zones ought to be looked at. Um, certainly, our code is not perfect. It's, uh, work in progress, but we feel that significant progress was made in making the code more friendly to multifamily housing development with the slate of changes that were made earlier this year. So, I had intended to get exact acreages to share with you tonight. That will have to be in a subsequent meeting, but we had, like, literally, single-digit number of acres available for multifamily development according to our previous zoning map, and with the new zones that have been created and the code that governs those zones, we probably have well over 100 acres. Again, I need to get numbers for you on this, but there's a lot more acreage now available to multifamily housing development with these new code updates. So, we're, we've made progress there. Again, not perfect, but a lot of progress.
Good.
Um, uh, so those first two kind of go hand in hand. The code, uh, that implements the zones on the map. So, we've made the code a little friendlier, and, in terms of the densities that's allowed, parking requirements have been, um, decreased incrementally. So, for example, whereas before, every housing unit in the entire city, regardless of size, demanded two parking spaces. That's been amended to now be sort of prorated based on the square footage, or number of bedrooms in a unit. So, a two-bedroom unit, for example, I believe calls for one and a half spaces, and a one-bedroom unit calls for one required space. Um, some might argue that we need to go further with that, but that was the step that the Planning Commission and the Council was willing to take, at least at this point in time, to make those, uh, parking reductions. These are all things that make projects get closer to penciling for developers. Um, one thing that we are in the mix of right now, but certainly probably need more time, is just allowing market drivers to react to the changes that we've made. They've only been on the books for less than six months at this point, and that's probably hardly enough time to see the development community react to these changes, to become aware of them, and to then, uh, start looking for land and proposing projects. Um, so, this is something that, uh, that may just require more time, if, in order for us to see apartment and multifamily development. We just need the market sometimes to do its thing after we've made some policy changes. Um, density bonuses, this is a tool that we're not currently really playing with. It's one that the Council certainly could direct staff to, uh, research and maybe, um, introduce in tandem with a CET, or in lieu of a CET. This is, you know, all up to you and, and what direction you want to take it. But, density bonuses are kind of exactly what they sound like. They, you, they're, they're a sort of a, uh, a trade-off with developers. They can increase density and therefore hopefully the profitability of a project, or at least make it pencil. Um, and, uh, the city has certain, uh, things that they may get in, uh, I don't know if I'm phrasing this right. So, uh, an example may be that a building can be one-story taller than is otherwise allowed in the zone, or 16 units per acre are allowed, uh, instead of 12. And these are arbitrary numbers, I'm just throwing out there. Um, but, uh, developers can get these allowances in order to build affordable or subsidized, uh, housing. Uh, let's see here. This is one that we also are not currently working on. To my knowledge, we don't have any large tract of land that could be donated towards a multifamily or affordable multifamily subsidized project. Um, the closest we come to something like this would be if the Urban Renewal Agency were to acquire land in our district here downtown, and then issue an RFP for a developer to then utilize that land for development. And that land could either be written down in value significantly down to zero, or just significantly discounted in order to, uh, incentivize a developer to build in our urban renewal area. But, we don't really, I mean, I, I suppose general fund dollars or debt could be used in order to buy land elsewhere in the city in order to promote development, but, um, that would be a pretty, um, uh, strong approach. Tax incentives, and, uh, so in the form of abatements or credits, um, this would have to be in conjunction with the county most likely. Um, you know, the assessor's office is at the county offices, not at the city. There's a city portion, and I guess we could potentially look at foregoing that for certain types of projects. This is another one that we don't, um, that we're not touching at this point, but that we could. These are just a list of, uh, tools. Uh, I guess I'll say one that we may want to consider, um, more seriously. It's called a, um, vertical housing, uh, tax credit. Um, and you can Google that up if you want to, but a vertical housing tax credit, um, I'm going to be completely honest and say that I'm not super well-versed in it, but it creates a designated zone in a city. It could be our downtown. It could be somewhere else that we target for multi, multi-story, multifamily housing. Um, I believe it requires a mixed-use component, so there has to be sort of a commercial component in addition to the residential. Um, but this is a tax credit, and so, rather than being a tax, uh, abatement, this is a credit directly to a developer's tax bill. Um, and it's, uh, granted for developing projects that meet the vertical housing criteria. Um, finally, SDC reform. Uh, this is another one that we've played with only a little, and I, uh, well, actually, Denise, maybe you want to chime in. Have we looked at SDC structure anytime recently, or made any changes?
No, no, we haven't. Um, we do, uh, we will finance SDCs. Um, we're talking about maybe doing a couple other things on when we collect SDCs. Um, we have, I think we've done some work with, um, SDCs when, if someone's building a, um, additional dwelling unit. I don't think we're charging for SDCs, are we, Matt, for that?
Um, it's a, a reduced rate.
Right, right. So, we have done a little bit, but not, not a whole lot.
Okay. Yeah, so, so there's, this is another tool that's perhaps underutilized. Um, Taylor and I and Denise met with the Home Builders Association, um, last week, virtually, and, um, uh, they will, um, have an opportunity in a subsequent meeting, as will other groups, to state their position on something like a construction excise tax, if this conversation proceeds. But, one of the things that they talked to us about, and that staff concurred seems completely reasonable, uh, would be, um, deferring the collection of SDCs. So, right now, system development charges, which for a single-family house are about, was it $22,000, Denise? Somewhere in that range. Um, that's due at the time they pick up a permit to build a house. So, they haven't turned a shovel of dirt, most likely, and, and they've paid $22,000 in city fees. And those are important fees. They support our infrastructure and growth, but there's not, um, too many compelling arguments to be made for why those have to be due at the time of permit issuance. They could be due at some other point along the development timeline, and they recommended, or suggested at least, that they could be collected at the time of final inspection, so right before that piece of housing inventory comes online, to be occupied or sold. Um, that would be an appropriate time to collect those fees. And the reason why that's attractive to developers is because it, uh, reduces the total carrying cost of a project for the time period of construction. So, they're incurring interest on the debt that they're using to build housing while it's under construction. Uh, it's just an additional line item that, that interest carries that they could defer to a later date and, and save on. Um, they estimated, I think, if my memory serves me, is like $1,000 to $1,500 per house that could be saved, um, uh, by deferring these SDCs to final inspection instead of collecting them at permit issuance.
So, Matt?
Yes, sir?
A question here. With, with that, would they, are they advocating then that we use the deferral of SDCs as an incentive for multifamily housing then, or, or affordable housing? As opposed to all builders?
No. Um, as you might imagine, the Home Builders Association position on a CET is, basically, they oppose it, and see it as a deterrent to development. Um, that might not be completely fair. I think that they are not necessarily 100% opposed to it, but they would like to see the city reciprocate in some way. Um, and this is one way they feel like the city can reciprocate. So, if you're going to charge us an additional $2,400 on our permit costs for your CET, please allow us to then pay our SDCs at a later date so we can save $1,000 or $1,500. So, it just, it's kind of that give and take a little bit that they're asking for, if you did decide to move forward with a CET.
Okay, gotcha. And, so, so could something like this, though, be considered in lieu of a CET as an incentive for builders that would be looking to do a multifamily?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I suppose if, if a CET didn't move forward, uh, you could defer SDCs for multifamily development, and that would act as a incentive. It probably wouldn't be a significant incentive to a developer, but every, every gesture, I think, helps. So...
And then, just for clarification, um, we were talking, the CTS are mainly for affordable housing, if I'm reading that right, but does multifamily fall into affordable housing? Are they, are we using those the same way, um, or is there a distinction between the two?
Yeah, so that, that's a good question, and can we revisit that in a moment?
Yep.
Okay. Um, one other word on SDC reform. One other way that cities can be more development-friendly is to look at prorating SDCs based on something like square footage, or number of bedrooms, or, so, using some other formula, rather than having a 1,200-square-foot house incur the same SDCs as a 3,500-square-foot house. Um, the assumption there being that the burden on the city's systems is going to be lower with a 1,200-square-foot house than it would be for a 3,500-square-foot house, because there's fewer people flushing the toilets, fewer people using the streets, using the parks, et cetera. That may not be the case. There may be a couple living in a 3,500-square-foot house, and five people living in a two-bedroom house, but the theory anyway is that the larger house has more burden on the city's systems, and therefore the SDCs ought to be reduced for smaller units. Um, other tools. Uh, this would include a construction excise tax, and we'll get into that in a moment. So, uh, Paul, I guess this is where we revisit your question. Um, these tools, I think, promote, or could be used to promote both the development of market-rate and below-market-rate housing, depending on how a program was set up. These things could be offered only to subsidize, or, excuse me, not subsidize, but affordable capital-A, um, projects, and not offered to market-rate projects. Uh, I, I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but that's one way this could be used to promote below-market-rate housing, but that might not go far enough to get below-market-rate housing. Um, that's what, where the, something like a CET comes in, to where there could be a significant pot of money used in order to subsidize the creation of below-market-rate housing. Sorry, someone's outside the window waving at me. Um, so, so, yes, Paul, um, a, a construction excise tax can only be used per statute to incentivize the development of below-market-rate housing. That's going to be affordable, at a minimum, to someone earning 80% of the area median income, AMI. So, that doesn't quite reach the level of, um, what income requirements there are for, uh, truly subsidized capital-A affordable housing. It's sort of an increment above that. Um, but nonetheless, it's below-market rate. Um, and, and that's what the monies have to be used towards. They could not be used for a market-rate development project, at least as far as I know. Affordable housing is, with a capital-A, meaning that it's by definition subsidized by typically, uh, government in some form, or donations of some sort, um, not provided by the market, because it, it's not going to pencil out without the subsidy, and that's, that's why it's, uh, that's why there's need for it. So, um, I attended a webinar last week with, um, Community Partnership for Affordable Housing. They're a Portland-based affordable housing developer, and they walked through sort of a typical project with us, and helped us to identify like what the common funding sources might be for a subsidized project. So, these are sort of large-level buckets. I can show you a case study here in just a moment, but you see it's kind of a combination of federal, state, and local contributions, in addition to potential fee waivers, and then all the things that would normally fund a development- in addition to potential fee waivers and then all the things that would normally fund a development project like debt or equity. Oftentimes, but not always, affordable housing projects are developed and managed by mission-driven nonprofit organizations. For example, the Community Partnership for Affordable Housing. There are others that operate in our region as well. That isn't to say that some other ambitious developer that operates for profit couldn't develop an affordable project. They would just have to meet the criteria. Oftentimes, it's a little bit more red tape and difficult to put together than many developers have an appetite for. But, but we actually have a development in town on Hillway. Denise, you might be able to remind me the name of the development or someone else. But as far as I know, that project is a subsidized Section 8 project and it's owned by a for-profit firm.
Gosh, I don't remember the name up there, but it's the apartments right there on Hillway when you go in.
Yeah, it's pretty big. I think it's like 150 units, something like that. So this is a sort of a case study of a project that CPo, Community Partnership for Affordable Housing, did in the city of Beaverton. You can kind of see the pie chart breakdown. I apologize for not having specific percentages here. But I'd have to pull up the notes on this to... How do I get to? Oh, well. What I wanted to do is be able to give you the definitions for these acronyms, but, because I was unfamiliar with many of them. I believe these first two are state-level programs. The HTF was a HUD program. You have a donation from Washington County, some sort of nominal contribution from the city. That might have been some sort of fee reduction. Metro's TOD, this stands for Transit Oriented Development. So they have funds set aside to incentivize multifamily housing development, affordable housing development close to transportation corridors. In their case, that usually means next to max. And then, let's see here, Washington County Funds. The home program, though, is, I believe, just a conduit for federal funding. So it comes from the county, but it actually comes from the feds. Debt and then deferred development fees. So this is the stack that has to be assembled in order to put one of these projects together. You know, consider a normal market-rate project would probably just have a developer's equity and, and then bank debt, and they get to work. This considers, or requires a considerable amount of orchestration, as you can see, to assemble all of this capital stack to bring it together. So I just want to emphasize again, CET is probably not the end-all, be-all for creating affordable housing. As you can see, there are other programs that can be assembled in order to try and put a project together in partnership with an affordable housing developer. That said, a construction excise tax is a new tool introduced in the state of Oregon in 2016 through Senate Bill 1533, which allows jurisdictions to be, I guess, as I'm seeing it, anyway, a little bit more proactive. Especially where cities with smaller budgets in the general fund, cities that may not have large tracts of surplus land, for example, can in some way anyhow raise funds and contribute to a project if there really is a need and a desire to create it. This next part is really just a review of Katie's, Councilor Dunsir's presentations. As you know, it can, the tax can be up to 1% of the permit valuation. So that's not the sales price of the home. If the home sells for $400,000, but it, you know, the cost to the developer was $300,000, the, the 1% is charged on the $300,000 permit valuation, not the sales, retail sales price. Those funds, then, right off the top, there's a 4% chunk that gets sliced off that would go to the city in order to administer the program and just pay for staff expenses and other administrative expenses to run the program. And then of that remaining 96%, then it breaks down as you see here. As Councilor Dunsir mentioned, this 35% pot is pretty flexible in terms of how the city could use it. It could be used, for example, to, many of these subsidized projects have managers who are onsite who provide other wraparound services to residents. And of course, those have an expense. And that's one way, for example, these program funds could be used. The OHCS, that's a state-level agency, and that 15% goes to them. But they take that money right back into the community that gave it to them for homeownership programming. So down payment assistance, foreclosure avoidance, you know, things like that. So even though it's paid to the state, they're required to bring it back to our community. That's it, that's it for my spiel. Questions, concerns, anything like that before Taylor jumps in?
No, that was pretty well said, I think. Paul, do you have anything else you'd like to ask since you came up to the last question? Is there anything you'd like to continue on with that, or has that answered all your questions?
I had a few questions that I wrote down as we, as we, as you were presenting here, Matt. And you answered most of them through it. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the effort on this. This was a great, great presentation. I know we, we had a preliminary HNA. Do we have plans to do a more in-depth one? And when, when could, what does it take to do something like that?
Yeah, Denise, you want to speak to that?
Yeah. So this, along with a couple other things, issues that we are dealing with right now, it's really becoming apparent that we need to complete a formal HNA. And so I have Taylor looking into that. We, we, there's, there's some grant money that we know is available, but not for a year and a half. And we'd like to get it done now to help us when we move forward with things like this, to have the backup material necessary to show that we really needed to do something. So Taylor's looking at it. We think it's going to be around $40,000. I feel like we have the money coming in with the building that we have now to go ahead and get, get that going. So it's going to be something that I bring to the council shortly to try to get that, that HNA done. I think it's important for this, it's, it's important for, we have some subdivisions coming up and we really don't have an adequate housing chapter in our comprehensive plan. So we really need to get it done since these subdivisions are coming up also.
Yeah, Denise, go ahead.
Who, who does the HNA? So is that an outside, third-party?
Yes, yes. It's someone that knows what they're doing, yes. Would hire someone.
I would also just add that in terms of the grant funding that we would expect to be able to get when the site, when it cycles back around again, because of all of the budget cuts that have happened at the state, that we're not sure if that funding's going to actually come through. So that's just another reason why it would be smart to just go ahead and get it done if possible.
And Taylor, I think that answers the question I was just going to ask. I know the county had a deal where they were going to do an analysis and they said that each city could team up with them and it would cost them a, a minimal amount to, to jump onboard. And then that would cover their area for the housing development analysis. Is that true, or are they not doing that?
That's what we did to get this preliminary. The county work is what, what got us to where we are now.
Okay, but that's not in-depth enough.
No, exactly. It's, it's the basis to go ahead and write your chapter on housing for your comprehensive plan.
And the benefit also of, the benefit of opting into that is that it gives us that baseline level of data that you can then work from and theoretically should make a, a formal HNA cheaper because of that. Because we have that recent data.
Yep.
Okay. And my other question is, now, in the CET, would we have more bargaining with the county and the state as far as matching grants if we had that 1% in, in a, you know, fund? Wouldn't that give us an advantage as far as matching grants and, and things that we could get to incentivize these build-outs of affordable housing and stuff like that?
That's right. And there's actually, there's some information from Bend's CET. Bend has had their CET in place, actually, since 2006. And I don't remember specific numbers, so I apologize for that. But yeah, because, because they had that extra pot of money that they could pull from, they were able to secure more funding from the state or from county pots or grants because they were able to match higher, higher numbers.
Okay, thank you.
And that may not be because of the CET specifically, but the city had skin in the game, something to offer to match those funds. It happened to be that the source was the CET. Am I getting that right, Taylor? Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions for Matt before we go on with Taylor? Okay, Taylor, take it away.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to give a kind of brief overview of cities that do have a CET in place and also cities that are considering a CET. And I'll just also say the same thing that Matt said. If any questions come up, please feel free to unmute yourself and interrupt me. And yeah, if there's anything that we can't answer in this session, I'll, you know, write stuff down and, and plan to look into it and we can come back to it. Okay, and I guess I'll have to ask, Matt, are you controlling the slides, or do I have to?
Yeah, I guess just give me one, one of these or something.
Okay, next slide. Thanks. Okay, so Bend's CET, like I said, they've had, actually, since 2006, they were the first city to have a CET. Only 1/3 of the, now maximum allowed, 1% of the permit valuation, valuation. And it is charged for industrial, commercial, and residential permits. All of their revenue from their CET goes to their affordable housing fund. That's no longer possible, as Matt explained. Now, there's that required 50, 35, 15% split to go to developer incentives, 15% to the state, and 35% to the affordable housing fund. So Bend actually has numbers on how many units their fund has, helps them create. And so the most recent numbers that I could find were, I think, from 2018. And they had almost 700 affordable units built and a little bit over 600 of those being multifamily. And those affordabilities, I didn't want to list them all out here, but they ranged between 100% of the area median income or under 100% down to 40% of the area median income. Next.
Hey, Kayla. Just a quick question on that. Bend, the, all those units that they have, I think Matt said in his, his presentation that it would typically be some sort of, maybe, a mission-driven nonprofit that, that runs those things. Is that the same, do you know, as in Bend? Is that an organization that's running these 698 affordable units?
Not, not always. So, and that's, that last note down there, some, there's a mix of for-profit and nonprofit developers that, 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 that those incentives would go towards, right? So depending on the project, that money would be available to any project, whether it was from a mission-driven, yeah, affordable housing developer or a for-profit developer that, you know, looked at that incentive and said, "Oh, I could make this, you know, work to my benefit and create these affordable units and still make that profit."
Thank you.
So Cannon Beach is a pretty good example of what seems to be sort of a standard, I guess. They charge the full maximum 1% of the permit value, both residential and commercial. And I will note that, and maybe some deeper digging would, would explain this, but the information that I was able to find, I couldn't always tell whether residential and commercial included industrial or if it was truly just commercial and excluding industrial. But it does look like there's a, you know, some places do charge it for industrial development, but not others. So it's got the 50, 35, 15% split. And then all of the commercial revenue goes towards their affordable housing fund. That's kind of the standard, it seems like. Next. Corvallis is essentially the same, except that they go above the 1%. That 1% limit is only the maximum for, that can be charged on a residential permit value. So they actually have a 1.5% tax on commercial permits, but then those revenues are split in the same way. Hood River is the same, yeah, you can go to the next one. Hood River is the same as Cannon Beach. So next again.
Taylor? So on the commercial, industrial one, you don't have to break it down like the residential. You could use 100% for affordable housing?
Correct. Yep.
Good to know.
Medford's CET is also like Bend, only 1/3 of that 1% maximum permit value. And that's for any of their, yeah, residential, commercial, and industrial. And on top of that, there's a $50,000 limit for commercial or industrial charges. And then it is split the same, the same way as, as most of the others. Next. Milwaukee's CET also looks pretty much the same as the others. The difference being that the revenue coming from their commercial permits, half of that is dedicated specifically to economic development initiatives. Next, thank you. So Newport's CET, they are, I mean, so it's a requirement that the, the revenue for the residential permits is, you know, split up in that 50%, 35%, 15% way. And so when they say that they are, they have a work group working to determine how the rest will be spent, I get the impression from what I read that they would like to be a little bit more specific than, than they are required to be. But I can make a note, if people want more specifics on exactly how they could have flexibility there, I can look further into that. And then with the commercial, they do have that flexibility. So they are working to determine how that will be spent. Also, the 1% is currently what they're charging, but asterisk, it is set annually by city council. So they worked that flexibility in there in case they wanted to, yeah, change it, I suppose. Same deal as Cannon Beach and Hood River, except they, in Portland, there's the inclusionary zoning where, if people aren't familiar with how inclusionary zoning works, it essentially means that if you have a multifamily development that has at least 20 units, 20% of those units need to be affordable. So, and I can't remember if it's affordable at 80% or 60% of the area median income. And then the other specificity that's added And then the other specificity that's added into Portland's CET is they do specify that 60% AMI for their, what the revenue that goes towards their Affordable Housing Fund. And Hood River County, in addition to the city of Hood River, also has a CET, and it looks the same, same split as the others.
I'll chime in briefly to say that the question may come up of what if, what if Clackamas County introduced a CET and Estacada had a CET? Does that amount to a double whammy to developers? And the answer to that would be no. The CET can only be collected by the jurisdiction that's issuing building permits. So the county tax would not apply within the incorporated city of Estacada.
That's right. Next slide. There are six cities that are on record as considering a CET and also the county, Washington County. So listed here, Astoria, oh, I'm going to read them out just in case anyone doesn't have a screen. Astoria, Eugene, McMinnville, Newburgh, Salem, and Sisters, and then Washington County. All righty, next. So I guess I'll pause and maybe invite any questions or comments at this point.
Just a real quick question. What's the smallest city that you've ran across that has approved this?
That has approved it?
Yes.
So the smallest city that has a CET, I guess I don't know off the top of my head.
It would probably be Newport.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought too out of that list.
Probably Newport.
Newport or Cannon Beach, I think they're both smaller than us.
Yeah, Cannon Beach might be smaller than Newport.
Yeah. All righty, so I'm going to kind of shift gears. And for the remainder of this work session, I'm hoping to, I think we're really hoping to gather kind of input on where the council wants to go next. What do we need in terms of, who else do we, you know, do we think we need to hear from? What does that outreach maybe need to look like in terms of outreach method or timeline? How many meetings do we think we're going to need in order to, you know, if we want to further the conversation? How much content are we going to, you know, want to chew on? And then I also have included in here some information about Milwaukee's timeline and the process, the whole process that they went through. So yeah, let's jump into, I think, the first question here is who to hear from. As Matt mentioned, we have, we had one conversation with the Home Builders Association. So there's certainly someone, or they represent one of the stakeholders who would be impacted by a CET. But yeah, I guess what-
So Taylor, real quick, so after our last meeting, when Counselor Dunsmere brought all this up, I made a couple of phone calls and I was actually able to chat with somebody out at Newport, kind of about, and I asked them just what their process was, was, you know, did you just bring this in and approve it? Or, you know, was there an actual process? And what they told me is, yes, it was a process. And according to the gentleman, it took him, I want to say it was like two years, to be honest. And they had builders that were involved, both residential and commercial. They had lawyers, they had some residential people that were there. They had a whole committee that kind of went over this and involved everybody that was going to be affected by it. So that's kind of, was my thought process behind this, was to get the people who are affected by this, not to just blindly accept something, but to get the people involved that are affected by this and get their input. It's how I would see it going the best way. The other thing that Newport did too was they were redoing their whole SDCs as well during this process, right? So it was kind of like what Matt was saying, is it's a, it's a give and take, right? Like, maybe we change things around where we add this 1%, but we eliminate this and then it, you know, it kind of all balances out in a sense, is how I was told from Newport.
Similar to that, Councilor Gates, what you were just talking about, I wonder how this affects folks who already have like platted land set out and to have this come in. And it may not seem like a lot for a developer with, I don't know, 1 to 10 places, but someone who's looking at 80 to 100, this is, this could be a bigger impact. So is there folks who are grandfathered in? Or how would it look for folks who are already planning to do that, to build, but don't have this factored into their budgets? And so I'd like to see some proposals for how we would manage that. And then also very much hear from those folks who would be impacted. I was, I'm particularly concerned about developers just passing this on to the folks who are buying the home, which then I feel like it's kind of counterintuitive to going, to having it be for affordable housing, but we're adding this other $1,000 to $3,000 that someone has to pay, which can be a lot when you're trying to get into your first house. And so I just want to make sure that we're looking at this from all angles.
Yeah, those were some points that the Home Builders Association raised as well, that in a, in a, in a hot market, hot sellers market like the one we're in, it's most likely the homeowner, the new homeowner, that's going to really eat the speed because the developers will pass it on. In a tougher market or a tighter market, it's more likely going to be the developer that has to eat it because they can't just bump the price up by that $2,500 increment as easily or at all. And the concern about land that's already platted and things like that, yeah, certainly those are nuances that will have to be considered to make sure that a developer who's been planning a project and carefully calculated a pro forma that pencils, that we don't ruin that for them, that would be uncalled for and probably not a best practice. So we'll just need to be sensitive to that, but I appreciate you bringing it up.
And my other question would be, if the other cities that you mentioned that have adopted a CET, if they have the same provision around remodels or adding square footage to an existing home? I know we had it at like the $100,000 mark and adding square footage to an existing, an existing home. That word is hard for me today. Is that something that's typically included in a CET? Or are they typically only for new construction?
Well, I've looked up a few ordinances and they seem to all have that same figure in them. But I've only looked up a couple. I haven't looked up all of those city ordinances. But the two or three that I have looked at have used that $100,000 number. And I was going to say, with the CET, that there are ways, like Matt was saying, for example, if we allow the full SDCs to be collected at the end of the building, when the building is built, and that saves them, let's say $1,000 to $1,500, you don't have to have a 1%. Many of these cities have a third of a percent. Or you could have a half of a percent. And maybe that in itself balances out that, you know, that thing. But I think what we heard from the home builders and some of the builders that were there is, we shouldn't put it all on the back of one group of people. We should look at all the tools that are available and see how they can all work together.
True. I had one question, in that, what would protect us on that shifting the SDCs till the end? If, let's say, a developer built out and went, you know, belly up, would we still be protected to have those funds at the end of that? I mean, what would, I mean, what would protect us in that, you know?
Well, on the SDCs, they wouldn't get their, they wouldn't have approval for anyone to buy the house until the SDCs were paid. So the SDCs are paying for the impact you're making on the system. So they really aren't making the impact on the system until that house is being lived in. So they, they would not get their certificate of occupancy or their final inspection pass without paying everything that they needed to pay.
Yeah, thank you.
They shared with us that the city of Tigard has introduced this SDC deferral. And we could look at their policy and see what protections they have there. But yeah, as Denise mentioned, they can't sell the house until the SDCs are paid.
Thank you.
What's the, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry. What is, is there a cap on the commercial? I noticed that that one, there, it was at 1.5% for commercial. I know there's a cap, 1% for residential. But is there a cap for commercial or could that be whatever?
I'm not sure, Taylor, do you know?
There is a cap, but I'm not sure what it is.
I was just curious.
I don't, are you sure there is a cap?
Yeah, I don't, I never read anything and I wasn't sure. And that's why I was kind of hoping maybe someone else read something. I didn't see anything mentioning a cap, which almost is scary in itself.
I didn't think that there was a cap, but my assumption was just that, I mean, even, if, if even 1% is enough of a disincentive to, yeah, to, to development, then I would imagine that just, yeah, anything far beyond that for commercial development would, would not seem reasonable enough for, for a jurisdiction to want to impose. But I don't know.
The cap would be what you, what you said at that, as the city council.
Right, but there's no state.
App, so if we said it, if we said it's 1% now, what's stopping someone two years from now coming in and raising it to five? Not that they're going to, but they could.
Yeah, you mean another council?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, there would be nothing, just like another council could come in and remove it or lower it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I was doing a little research on this as well too. It seems like a lot of the cities, I don't know if all of them do, but a lot of them had affordable housing action committees or affordable housing staff as well too. I'd be curious to hear from the other cities, how many of them had an organized project that could really address this in place already? And, and if so, what it would, what would it take to get Estacada to have one as well? And then from those cities that took it on, did they have a plan in place for how to spend that money too? I was looking at Sisters, looks like they brought it up a couple of times, 2016, then most recently in 2019. And it's just been met with a lot of backlash. And one of the things that the council got hit with is not having a plan in place before even addressing this.
I think some, some basic program parameters at a minimum would probably be needed in order to gain the support of those who may be on the fence or even opposed. The more uncertainty there is, probably the more naysayers there will be. At the same time, that's got to be balanced against debating something and debating minutia, you know, for years and years and years. There's, you know, there's the happy medium there somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was a big topic of conversation when Counselor Dunsmere brought this up the first time. And it was just to have some basic outcomes and goals of what our affordable housing program would look like and what kind of structure we would have, be able to have in place and what kind of programming we, we would strive to be able to build with the funds. But to put a tax in and start collecting money without knowing where it's going is a little, makes me a little wary. My other question was around, I know, Matt, you said as part of yours, you're part of the presentation, that we need some time to let the market kind of do its thing and see all the changes that have been made. Is there a typical timeline for that? Or what should we be expecting for, when we make policy or zoning or other development code changes? How long does it typically take for us to see the market adjust?
Yeah, that's a hard question to answer. You know, Estacada is a unique city in the sense that we're so small, but yet on the very edge of a major metropolitan area. So the timeline to reaction could be quick or, or not quick at all. I don't, I don't know that we can answer that.
Yeah, I think that we, right now, it seems like we do have people interested in building. So I would have said a couple of years ago that it would have taken years to see anything. But I think, Taylor, we just had our first pre-app, a subdivision that will be, that does include some of this new zones that are going to promote or kind of have the uses for this. So I think we're, we're going to see shortly how that subdivision looks. And it may give us some input on what, what people are going to be doing with those new zones. This will be the first subdivision that we've had that, like I said, that is, is in these new zones. So it'll be exciting to see what they have proposed.
So one other thought there as well is, over a longer period of time, like say 10 to 20 years, there's housing theory. Taylor, you've been to grad school on this and I haven't, so tell me where I'm messing this up. But, you know, housing affordability is created through filtering as well. So if a market rate project comes on market and provides X number of units in the community, some, some, some number of those are going to be occupied by people who are already living in the community that want to sort of upgrade or move into there. And then it has the filtering effect of where older, less attractive properties, I don't know how else to phrase that, become de facto more affordable housing. Not with a capital A, probably with a lowercase a in the sense that it's de facto affordable. But, so there's advantages to creating market rate projects and below-market rate projects, but in, in, in trying to enhance affordability. I will just note though, that the CET can only be used for these subsidized below-market projects. So that's really what we're, we're talking about two things simultaneously, but we need to make sure we differentiate between them. There's, the zoning code and the revisions we've made in that are going to create market-driven projects that are at market rate. The market still is not going to create on its own a subsidized project. And that's where something like a CET or other tools come in. So anyway, just want to make, draw that distinction.
That's right. And I would also just note with the, the filtering kind of model, it's a, it is definitely kind of a, an over-generalization that is super sort of location and situation-specific. And in markets that, where you're seeing just general, you know, general rise in housing cost and housing need, as we're seeing in, you know, throughout the region, and we are very much affected by the regional market for sure and will increasingly be the, the filtering, yeah, that benefit that, that we would hope to get from newer housing filtering, you know, filtering down over time. That benefit gets reduced by, by the market becoming a little bit less affordable in general, so.
Yeah, so, so as an example, the filtering effect in Portland is going to be, and the Portland region is going to be much less pronounced than in the areas surrounding Tulsa, Oklahoma, for example. Where there's a surplus, surplus of housing and a lot less demand to be there. So you'll still have a filtering effect in both areas, but it'll be much more pronounced in Tulsa than it will be in the Portland area.
Right, so all that to say, it's, filtering is not something that we should depend on for creating affordable housing.
Yeah, just something to consider, yeah.
So I would like to add too, after I had called Newport and kind of heard who they had talked to and just consulted, you know, I kind of called around and stuff and obviously got some backlash and stuff. And I think, I think one that stuck with me that I'd like to share is, is I was told, why not tax everybody who owns a house 1%? Why just new construction? And I kind of thought, oh, you know, almost hit reality for me. Like, I don't want to pay 1% on my house just because it is a large chunk of money. And like we kind of have already mentioned, that 1% is more than likely, especially in this kind of a market, going to get passed on to the homeowners. And I just wanted to share that as a, you know, why- that as a, uh, you know, why, why not tax everybody? And it, I don't know why it hit me so hard, other than the fact that, you know, I started crunching the numbers and thought, holy smokes. Like, I'm not willing necessarily, right? And I, and I feel like kinda hearing this conversation, which has been great, that there are potentially other ways that we, we can incentivize someone to come in and build a multifamily home, right? I think there might be some other tools and some other ways that we can look at, but that's just my two cents.
All right. Um, do we wanna, are there any other thoughts on, um, perspectives or input needed before we move on to?
Well, I-
Go ahead.
Sorry, Sean.
Oh, fine.
Um, I like the list that's up on screen right now of people to talk to. Um, I definitely, I definitely do wanna hear, um, you know, hear their perspectives, you know, the builders, uh, the contractors, you know, just, um, even people that are considering building, uh, the developers. Um, I, I would like to hear what they have to say. Um, I still, you know, even though it's got $100,000, um, you know, minimum, um, I, I still don't like the fact that, um, there's a, that, that clause in there about, um, renovation. Um, but I mean, I guess if it's, it, that is a, a big chunk of money. Um, I just don't, uh, I just, it's something in my, something in me doesn't like that, uh, that clause. So, um, but, um, I definitely think we need to reach out and, um, have more conversations, um, maybe get a, a workshop together where the builders and where those people can come in and speak and we can hear their perspectives, you know, firsthand. Uh, that would be, that would be helpful for me at least. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, any more questions about this issue with, uh, Matt or, or Taylor? No? Okay.
All right.
Hello, guys?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I had a, a couple, a couple more slides. I don't have the deck, so I'm not sure exactly how many. But I did wanna give, um, before we end, um, certainly give the, um, just example of the timeline, the process that Milwaukee went through with theirs. So could you go to the next slide, Matt? So, um, from the first meeting in which, uh, the idea of a CET was introduced, um, to Milwaukee City Council, that was in July of 2016, um, they had, as you can see, multiple related conversations throughout the next year. And then, um, almost a year and a half later is when they actually finally adopted the final version. Um, and, uh, as we've kind of talked about a little bit, um, is, would probably need to be the case, their, their, uh, you know, full fleshed out strategy for how to, how to use those funds, um, was not, you know, fully detailed, um, at the time of adoption. And so, um, in July of the next year, in 2018, they actually adopted their housing affordability strategy. And then in May of the next year, um, so almost a whole year later, they, um, just approved the plan for recruiting their CET oversight group. So it's definitely been, um, a long process for them. So I just wanted to give, um, yeah, an example of how long the timeline, um, has been for a lot of these other jurisdictions.
Thank you, Taylor. That gives us an idea. It's not something that can just be decided that quick. It looks like there's a lot of work to this, though.
All right. So, and then these were just some of the questions that, um, we had already received. And I just wanted to offer an opportunity for any other remaining questions to come our way.
I know, looking back on that other slide, Taylor, that you had up there about, from Milwaukee, um, having the, the meetings to address affordability, uh, I know that would be helpful for me that I could, um, that I could understand better what, what is needed out here. I, I don't know that we need an RNA or a, a housing needs analysis for that. Um, but to get an understanding of what, um, what affordable housing could, what we would need to do to get people here, uh, builders, uh, what affordable housing is. I, I, I think I just, I need to get up to speed on a lot of this personally.
Um, one, one perspective that may be interesting as far as other cities go is Bend. They have the most experience with this, it seems. They've had it in place since 2006, even before the state statute came online. And they've actually had projects built as a result of it. So I think we can do some work to get in contact with them and, and, uh, find out, um, how they've been able to be successful and, and, and perhaps most importantly, uh, keep all stakeholders involved, uh, happy and supportive. Maybe that's impossible, but you know, we, we do it to the best, uh, we can or they can. Um, one of the builders on our call with the Home Builders Association was Polish Homes, and, uh, they're the builder of Campanella Estates. Um, they specifically said Bend as a community was a, was a good example of a municipality that they feel does a good job of working with stakeholders and, um, and, and they're, they seemed, uh, I won't speak for them, but they seemed very supportive of Ben's approach to housing generally and working with developers to create developments that meet community needs and not just, uh, developer profits. So. You there, Taylor?
Yeah, if, if folks don't have any other questions, that's, that's all I've got.
So, so I guess what we want to hear of staff is, um, how do you want to see this, us, um, proceed on this? As you can see, it's, it is a lot of work. And so we wanna be sure that this is something that is a priority for the council and that you want to continue looking at this, um, for affordable housing. And, and like Taylor and Matt both said, just because we have zones for multifamily, those probably are gonna be built to market rate, market family, and maybe will not necessarily be affordable housing. Um, I think that the one place on Hillway that we have, it was a nonprofit that came in and built those and years ago. And so, um, I mean, we might have something where you guys want us to focus on trying to find another nonprofit. It seems like a lot of communities, that's who's building the affordable housing. There's profit and nonprofit. But so staff wants some direction, so we know how to proceed with this from this point forward.
It seems fair enough. Uh, council, you've had a chance to hear the proposal. Um, what are your feelings on this? Where should staff go from this point? Uh, if you wanna give me some input?
Maybe a real quick question.
Sure.
Just kinda help me. Has staff ever reached out? You know, I know, uh, Matt, you do an excellent job reaching out to the commercial side of things and trying to bring in businesses and, and that kinda stuff. Have we ever had a conversation with a builder that said, hey, you're building all these houses, what would it take for you to come in and build a multifamily house? Have we had a conversation like that yet?
Uh, mostly no, a little bit yes.
Okay.
I have, I have not, um, done any sort of shotgun outreach or targeted outreach to, say, apartment developers generally. A couple of years ago, I did have a conference call with a, one of these affordable housing nonprofits, 'cause I wanted to better understand why they build where they build and why an Estacada project may or may not be possible. And, um, uh, as far as I remember in that phone call, they didn't mention CET. It may have been such a new thing at that point. Um, but what they did say is that the, the greatest thing a city can do to make one of these projects come online, in addition to these other tools, but they ranked number one, and this is my memory, uh, would be controlling a site so that the city can then issue some sort of RFP and invite the development community through that channel to present a development proposal. So if the city can somehow acquire and control a site and then, and then call for proposals through an RFP to the affordable housing community or the development community generally, they said that's the best way they've seen cities succeed in creating one of these projects. If you have all of these incentives, it, 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 you, you, it's kind of a Russian roulette. You may get a project, you, you may, you may not. It just kinda depends on if you show up on the right developer's radar and the timing is right and, you know, things work out. But they said if you really wanted to be proactive, you gotta control a site and put it out for RFP.
Okay.
That's, that's for affordable housing. Affordable housing with a capital A.
Good. All right. Thank you, Matt. Any other questions to that? No? So back to council. Um, this is a time we need to give staff direction. So where do we wanna go with this? Um, whoever wants to start out, go ahead.
Matt, do you wanna take the screen down so they can see each other?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, there we go. Okay, I'll just start at the top. Justin, go ahead.
Uh, I would think that, uh, you know, I'd rather see maybe a committee formed of some sort, uh, that, uh, has the correct people, uh, that are affected by this created and have the committee almost be in charge of, of doing it. That's kinda what I got the feeling from Newport is how they started and, uh, went, went from there, really.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, Paul?
I was thinking along the same lines. I think this is a, a, a very big undertaking to do, uh, to get, uh, affordable housing built in here. Seems like just a big project , uh, on itself. Um, so I, I don't, though I think it's important to have, very important to have affordable housing out here. Um, I, I don't know if I'm ready to have staff put this as their priority, uh, to be working on right now. I would think, uh, having a committee, something like that in place that could help, uh, build that knowledge, build that sense of urgency, uh, build that understanding, uh, here in Estacada would be very helpful.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. Jerry?
Um, I agree. Um, you know, a committee in place with the council liaison, maybe, um, just, uh, doing more research, um, you know, get, get, get as much information as we can to help us make a, uh, you know, a good informed decision. Um, you know, that's, uh, that's important to me, so.
Good, great. Kimberly?
Sorry, I was just, uh, reading stuff that was coming in the comments. Um, I think affordable housing actually should be one of the top priorities that we're working on, um, and that we need to figure out a way to properly fund it and to figure out what the programs are. I don't know that we should jump right to the CET. I feel like that there was a lot of other things in, in the tools list that Matt provided that I thought, um, maybe, um, less tension inducing than the CET. Um, but I, I do agree that a committee on affordable housing, um, what, to help us figure out exactly what we need, what the goals of that program should be and how it should look, we need to have in place first. And then we can figure out how to fund the programs that come out of that committee. I think we're, we're got a little cart before the horse here with the CET.
Thank you, Kimberly. Um, I, I, I don't know how to approach this as the mayor. I, I think affordable housing is important. I believe that we need to be looking at that. Um, CETs, I don't know if we're ready or not. Um, but I wanna thank, uh, Councilor Dinsmore for bringing it forward. Uh, she did a lot of work on this and I wanna thank her for that. I wanna thank staff for bringing something to us that we can understand and work with. Um, and at the same time, I, I, I guess I'm with everybody here. I guess we should table this, uh, for a while before we start looking at CETs and maybe look at other avenues to use, uh, in the future. So my recommendation to staff is that we, we put this aside and, and concentrate on maybe, uh, forming a group that can help us put together some affordable housing ideas that will work, um, that we might look at. Um, and that would be my recommendation. So, um, I think council's all on board with that. Is council okay with that? Is there anybody?
Yeah. Um, as long, as long as the, um, the organization or the committee that we put together also includes, uh, you know, CET as an option. I just, I don't wanna rule it out per se, but, um, you know, I just wanna, you know, hopefully they'll come up with, you know, give us some options, you know, that's all.
So Matt and Taylor, um, is this, uh, direction, um, do you have some ideas on, I mean, a committee for this, to me, has to be, um, a pretty, um, you just can't pick anyone.
Right.
To, to be on this kind of committee. And so do you know of other cities we can talk to about that have this type of committee?
Yeah, certainly Milwaukee, um, created their, theirs is called like an Affordable Housing Strategy.
Okay.
Committee group or something like that. Um, oh, no, there's, there's was, sorry, theirs was CET specific. Um, I would have-
I mean, it, it might take, um, so I guess staff will leave with this direction and try to come up with something. Um, is Matt and Taylor, do, uh, do you have enough direction to, um?
I, I think, I, I think so. There's, the only, uh, main challenge or to some degree risk that I perceive is if, uh, who's gonna select who's on that committee? Do we, do we?
Yeah, so-
Some sort of public invitation?
I'd say council selects.
Yeah. So once we, um, I, I will, I would see this as an ad hoc committee where we aren't going to include it in our code, but it will be a committee for a time period with the duties. And once we get what that will be, the council will pass a resolution. And it will break down what the purpose, what the goals of that committee is and, and how we are picking the people on that committee.
Sure.
Okay.
We wanna keep it diverse as possible so that we get a, a bunch of different, um, perspectives.
Usually the council does make final appointment, but we need to do, once we get what the, the makeup of the committee, we need to pass a resolution that allows for the committee to be a committee.
Sure.
So I think my question then would be, um, how would we want the membership of that committee to be the same or different from that list of, you know, voices that we want at the table, um, that we kinda discussed earlier in this?
Maybe it would be the same.
Yeah, that whose input is needed slide is a fantastic starting point, uh, between builders. And then you also have the affordable housing advocates and other affordable housing developers. I would love to see some folks on there who are working with our houses or low-income community already, um, to make sure that they have, um, some, some strong say. Um, and if we can find, um, a couple of residents who would be willing to sit on the committee, who were the residential part of the, of the question, might, or the renovation part would affect them, that would be great as well. But you've got a great list started here already.
We just need to come up with how many of each and that. Uh, I just wanna be sure you guys have enough direction to look at this.
No.
I, I think so. I think that's enough direction. Um, some-
That's enough for me.
Sorry, what was that?
Okay.
She was, she was just freezing, Matt, that's all.
Okay. I hear everybody now. I, I think my thing froze up, so. Okay.
Let's see, what was I gonna say? Oh, I was gonna say, I just think, uh, as, as once, maybe it's after the committee is formed, uh, but at some point, even that committee is gonna need some direction with what they're charged with. Are they charged with developing or at least making a recommendation for an affordable housing development strategy?
Yes.
Are they focused on affordable housing? Are they focused on multifamily housing generally? Both? You know, that, that's kinda where I feel like we need some additional guidance. Is, is a subsidized housing project something that we need to study and charge this? Is, is a subsidized housing project something that we need to study and charge this group with? Or is it broader than that?
Are, are you looking for that input tonight then, Matt?
Uh, I don't know, I guess we're running short on time, but, um, at some point, I feel like some specificity, we got to put some rails on what that group is doing. Because if you get the, if you get, you get a group in a room and you're going to have folks who don't want a tax, you're going to have folks who do want a tax, you're going to have folks who say, let the market do its thing, and you're going to have folks who want all sorts of government subsidies. So just vocalizing opinions might not get us very far. They might need more direction in, we want, we want multifamily housing generally and we want to table something like a tax till down the road. Or we want to prioritize the study of a tax as a component of an affordable housing development. Something has got to be developed to put some rails on it or else it's just going to be long meetings that don't have any concrete outcome.
Would it, would it make sense to see what other cities have? I'm, I'm looking at Sisters right now, they've got a housing policy advisory board. They, they make suggestions to city council and the planning commission on affordable housing issues within, within the city. So I, I think it'd be hard to come up with some sort of, uh, real barriers right now or, you know, or direction right now. But I think it would be helpful, uh, for the council if, with, we knew what other, uh, what other cities offered. And maybe we could start by that, with that. What, what do the cities offer? Sisters has one, Eugene has one.
You can come back, yeah. So maybe we can come back with some examples of other places to get further direction.
Yeah, I think so. That would give us a better idea of what they're doing and probably give us a better idea of what we want to do, so. I can appreciate that, so. I think that's the direction. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. We'll end that conversation then, I think we're pretty well done with that. And that gives you, uh, Matt and Taylor enough to work with to start out, is that right? All right, good, thank you. Um, next on my list is the discussion, the letter to C4. Uh, you want to take that away, Denise? I think you have an idea on that?
I have no idea anything about it. I haven't been involved in any meetings. I, I, I can't update, I, I don't, yeah. I tried to see if there was anything in minutes when Katie said she wasn't coming, but there's really nothing in the minutes.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't see anything on the C4 that needed an immediate attention that I saw.
I think the, I think the, the, the goal was to pick between the four letters that we wanted to, uh, that we wanted to support. I guess there were four, the four letters that were sent in the email. I think that's what the goal tonight was to be, to pick between the, the four letters that, um, which one we wanted to support, which one, which one we wanted to send forth.
And, and did you, were you able, did you see, find four letters in the?
I, I did not.
Yeah, I didn't find it in here, so I don't.
There were two letters that were attached to the email.
What are these things in this that's the, that's actually listed as? Oh, no, this is first, second, third, we're considering about a lack of clarity. Yeah, I don't know. It's not it.
So maybe we can table this till, uh, maybe do a half hour session before Monday's council meeting to talk about it.
Do, I think they want some kind of response by a certain time, what's the mayor?
September sixteenth.
September sixteenth?
Yeah, that's what it says right here.
So you do have a meeting on September fourteenth? Should we discuss it then?
I think that would be fair.
Okay.
To do that.
I will not be at that meeting, I wanted to announce tonight, I'm going on vacation and I will be gone. But at that meeting, um, Taylor, you have an annexation, it's kind of a light agenda. There's an annexation, we'll put this on there, so I'm sure you'll be in good hands without me.
Oh, you think so, huh?
I'll be in Yellowstone.
Oh, nice. Don't you have to make an appointment to go in there? You can't just go in like you used to be able to.
You could go in, but there's a lot of closed, like the restaurants are all takeout and, but yeah, we've checked everything out, but there is, we're going, we're heading on past that to Mount Rushmore. And there's a lot of things that, museums that aren't open, but we're going to-
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Can we, can we make sure before, um, before that meeting, maybe, um, you know, or sometime this week, maybe get, make sure those four letters get recirculated back between, to the council?
Good idea, Jerry, thank you. All right, well, I guess that's all we had on tonight's, uh, workshop. Uh, is there anything else anybody would like to bring up that maybe we missed or something we need to talk about before I close this? All right, and that, I will now close the ESTICAD City Council Workshop and you all have a wonderful evening and, uh,
Thank you, Matt and Taylor.
Yeah, thanks.
See you at the next city council.
Very helpful.
Thanks, staff, for all your hard work.
Yeah, staff, as always.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.